Lock says nine o'clock, if you wouldn't stand with me, we have prayer and prayers for the meeting. Thank you, Lord, for loving us. Thank you all that you do for us. Lord, we pray that we might seek your guidance in all we do. Lord, give you thanks for all the blessings. We pray that we might, to you today, that all decisions we make might be in accordance with thy will for the betterment of this county. We thank you for the Lord that here today, that are concerned of this county, and pray that you, Lord, might look over and care for us. Forgive before we say, Lord, these things, that's not a name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Calling meeting, order, to have a motion, we approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Second. All favor say aye. Hold it likewise. Have a motion, we approve the claims.
I'll make a motion.
My second.
All favor say aye. Prove it, hold it likewise. Uh, segment's thrown out a few minutes late, but we will, uh, Stephanie, would you?
Of course, y'all know I'm Stephanie Clark with the AMA. It's time for us to begin the process of updating our hazardous mitigation plan for the county. This has to be updated every five years, and last year, the last time our plan was done, it took two thousand fourteen. And this plan is required by the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand. Each jurisdiction has to create a hazardous mitigation plan in order to be eligible for funding from FEMA. And in the past, in two thousand fourteen, we formed the Northwest Alabama Hazardous Mitigation Group with Calvert-Franklin and Winston Counties. And other counties may join us this year because we have light risks and hazards in each county. That will cut down on the cost, you know, the cost for developing the plan or they split among the counties. And right now, NACOG is also involved, and they're in the process of trying to get a grant to fund the development of our plan or the updating of our plan. And it's an effort to evaluate and identify all natural hazards that may affect our region. And I just need to get your approval to stay in the multi-jurisdictional plan with the other counties and for NACOG to go ahead and get the funding to develop our plan and implement it.
You say there are other counties about coming in from the?
There may be some more counties in Northwest Alabama that may join our multi-jurisdictional group this year, and that would cut the amount that would be required from us.
So what's your motion? You need a motion to?
I need a motion to allow NACOG to apply for the grants and for us to stay in the multi-jurisdictional group for our hazardous mitigation plan.
How many, do you say was in it now?
Now it's Calvert-Franklin, Winston, and us.
You hear the motion to have a second.
I mean, there's no money involved. Are you, you're not asking, you just?
Not now, not now. We have until the end of two thousand nineteen to get our plan together, and NACOG is in the process of trying to get a grant ready to submit, to get funding to pay for the development of our plan. And really, since they developed it, it really just, I told them, I said, it looks like it just needs to be tweaked a little, make sure, you know, because all of our hazardous, all of our hazards and risk are the same, nothing's changed, so it's just the process of going through and getting everybody to sign on with it.
You say you had a motion?
Yes, that's the motion to have a second.
Oh, I see.
Okay, is there any discussion before we vote? All favor say aye. Likewise, hold it.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Y'all have a good day.
Just thrown out.
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning. How are you, sir?
I'm all right. Appreciate the opportunity.
Give you the glory.
If I haven't been able to share with you my graduations, or perhaps see you in these seats as new commission members, looking forward to working with you as we have in the entire history of C three, about eight years now. We were formed in the fall of twenty ten. We were formed because we realized that we could do more together than separately. And that was to include three counties in a regional effort, especially in a rural area, it means so much when you can assemble all of your resources advantages, you just have more sales, and you have more of a marketing budget to promote that because it's competitive out there. Everybody wants similar things that we want. And each are prepared differently, but then very similar, and it's always that little bit of difference that you see in one community versus another that wins. And in small communities especially, it's tough for us to compete on a playing field that's not really level when you have larger communities that do have more to offer. And so we have, in the case of a regional effort of the area that I believe is competitive and is becoming more so, and the success that we had compares it out. So I'll share some of those things, but I want to first thank you for the great board that you've appointed. Each of our board members come from one selection by the commission, one by the founding organizations, which the merger of CDF Marion County Terms of Dollars and Marketing Budgets, CDF Marion County, and then the West Alabama Economic Development Authority down in Lamar and Fayette. When those two merged, they also were able to get a vote on this board as far as a board member, and then the others from the member of mayors. In Marion County, your partner, Scott Hunt, is a voting member, and then back with you here is the ex-facial member. And we appreciate them, they've grown a lot to the board in terms of ideas, and are looking over your investment, make sure that we do the right things. The other board members in Marion County, Philip Hare, who represents the CDF, that'll soon be the change, so that Wade Nixon, Chairman of the Board, works here at Bevel. And Wade has been ex-facial on our board, and is now the chairman of the CDF and become a member of the board. And then the other board member from the mayors is Bill Atkinson. Bill Atkinson had a lot to do with the formation of C three, and is, you know, just get another attorney. We get leader, has been the mayor of Winfield years ago, and been involved with this commission and this county in many ways in positive manner. So we've got those three from Marion County. Our Al Elbert is our incoming board chair, Al was here. Al's former mayor of Sulligent, worked for many years at Heister Yale, back with the NACCO and probably even a different name prior to that, Al. Goes through, they're gonna have a new name very soon in terms of announcements, you may read about last week, when these folks from the Chicago area are closing a plant up there and moving the corporate headquarters to Sulligent. It's called Bolzoni, Bolzoni Aroma, which would be on their signs. Well, that's a real good name. It's B O L Z O N I. Bolzoni is a company that makes attachments for forklifts, but as you know, Heister has made over a thousand parts. And they're sometimes insulting when you name any number because they did twice that number of parts. They're a very precision, sophisticated machine shop. And Greg Canfield, who toured here, who's Secretary of Commerce, when he toured NACO, he said, this is like many of our own suppliers on the Wood Route, they're able to do so many parts for forklifts. And so this case of bringing in the Bolzoni attachments for these forklifts and changing the name out front, but it'll still be a fully owned subsidiary of Heister Yale. That'll be about seventy million dollars investment, should be about fifty jobs. They're gonna dedicate a hundred thousand feet of their space. And they didn't have that much space in Sulligent, so they've gone across the street to a former Deer Valley facility. That building has come a long way in improvements. They're digging the pits for the, not quite eleven doors last week, but they're gonna be moving a lot of their work across the street and then bringing in Bolzoni really beginning in January. So that was a good plus for us to wind up. It's been a good year. We're at sub four unemployment rates in our area. We started with C three, the average unemployment rate was thirteen point two. That was in the fall of twenty ten. And the unemployment rates now, as you look, are about four percent or less. Marion County is less than Walker County and Jasper. Marion County is less than Calvert County, less than Mobile County, less than many counties, if you look around and you think, well, certainly they're doing better. We've read more about them, but the thing is, we've kind of been under the radar and had a lot of good things going on in our area. And because, again, we don't have the major media coverage that they do in larger cities. But where we are from fifteen to seventeen, we had nineteen hundred and fourteen jobs announced, three hundred and twenty-eight million investment. That was through twenty seventeen. This year will be, it's gonna be close to a hundred million. It'll be about five hundred jobs. The thing about these companies that are growing and even moving in, they want to control that publicity because, first of all, maybe they're gonna be scrutinized in what they're doing from a competitive standpoint. They wanna make sure that they're just making a dollar, making a product, and that's the most important thing to them, rather than publicity. So we don't have a lot of companies that share information about their comings and goings, but they do need to call us if they're looking for incentives. The state looks for one point of contact, one professional ally, and they really appreciate, I contain, when you see in a small area like this that there is that one point of contact for the three counties. And so when these companies want incentives, we have to do the notification to the state to say there are state and federal incentives that are gonna be asked for. And then the first thing they're gonna ask us, well, what are you doing locally to make it competitive? What kind of skin are you putting in the game? So that process takes place with every one of these expansions, and we appreciate these expansions because every one of those is a decision to grow here and not grow elsewhere. So we have had new companies come in, we continue to have that. Two great successes right here in Marion County, continued growth at Tiffin Motor Homes. Tiffin Motor Homes was a target for our organization for a long time in terms of, why don't they just do something down this way? We could see them doing some things in Mississippi. But we wanted to talk to them about the advantages here, and when they finally got to the point that they tapped out on all the labor in the Red Bay area, which is happening with a lot of employers in this area, saying, well, there's enough jobs now, we don't need anymore, it's actually getting more competitive to find good people. But they were certainly in a predicament in Red Bay, Alabama, to have, you know, twelve hundred plus employees in a community that size. So when they came to look at the building that was available, it made available by Sterling RV, owned by the city, they were able to go into that building and the building itself, and now that's not even enough space, so that they're building a service center out on the interstate, and that's gonna be the first tenant there.
I was up this morning at the service center, and boy, doing electrician work, said they had plans right now to add on to the service center, and they're not even through with it yet.
Yeah, that's, that's that company. It's been so successful, forty-five years in RV business, and they're, that was really a class C model that they're building on the Mercedes chassis, Sprinter chassis, that they already had the dealers asking me, how many of these can you send our way before they even had to come off the line? So that's gonna continue to grow. That's the largest growing segment in the RV market right now, the smaller, more manageable, both in terms of cost and driving them and maintaining them. So tenants do really well. They're probably close to two fifty right now. It's really hard to keep up, they're growing so fast. And then the same thing with Hamilton Homes right there in Hamilton. Those guys had a history at River Birch, but they've come to Hamilton with a brand-new business and have now exceeded two hundred employees and doing really well in the old Buccaneer building there. And same for our other manufactured homes companies. We get involved in things, especially now I mentioned workforce. We get involved in things in terms of workforce development that, of course, is a responsibility of Bevel, and some of the other state programs are responsible for workforces and training. But we worked with the home companies just in recent weeks at the media at Bevel to come up with agreements for them to look at the Ready to Work program for their employees. Ready to Work is a program really just for soft skills, for those things. Companies are saying, we can train anybody in the technical side of our business. If they'll show up and be responsible for themselves and behave in the right manner, manner to listen and learn, then we'll teach them the job. And give them the job if they're going through this Ready to Work program, and that's the agreement now that these, several of the home manufacturers, and plus Tiffin, Tiffin makes homes except on wheels, except we got an engine in them. So they're all together in that agreement with Bevel.
That comes a meeting, what, last Thursday, we were on to Montgomery getting training, and then make a meeting, what was the gist of this, this meeting last Thursday?
Bevel has an agreement now with Mercedes to look at how they're having a inflow of students that are already really on contract, have an agreement with Bevel that these kids, if they go through certain training, will be promised jobs. And Bevel's done that, it began in Tuscaloosa, I mean, not Bevel, but Mercedes, with Shelton State, and then they've done it with some others, even now in Hansville up at Wallace State. But that shows the growth and how people reach outside of just the immediate, immediate area for employees. Tuscaloosa's having that issue now, really problems are successful because of the folks just aren't there for the jobs, and Mercedes, of course, gets their pick, but then the others are hurting to say, okay, we've got the remainder, but the remainder of that group's getting to be smaller. And so Tuscaloosa has had, they're, they're closer to three percent of unemployment, but they're drawing from a wider area. A lot of our people drive to Mercedes each day. But that's, again, workforce, really means everything, which is why it's so important that Bevel continues to provide the workforce programs.
I understand, as I said, they paid tuition. They also guarantee, guarantee employment with a bonus?
They do, and that's a similar agreement that the Bevel had sort of dipped their toe into with NTN here in Hamilton. So that you've got kids that are in high school, but they're getting to know that plant, the equipment, and the duties and responsibilities of a particular job that can lead to their promise of work down the road. And so you're seeing that with more and more companies. Again, where does the state ask us what is the city's re-offering when we're enticing companies to come in? It's becoming more of that education side of the equation is asking companies, what are you putting in to make sure that, you know, we have people in these seats and these training classes? And we'll certainly have them here keeping promise that there's gonna be work for them out there, and what we're training is putting them in a position to get that work.
So what's the direct connection C three has got with Sulligent, Winfield, and Hamilton Home Builders? What's the direct connection where C three invites these people to expand their business? What's the connection? When you're telling me the unemployment rate just went down, a lot of this is due to President Trump, and his restrictions has lifted. What's the direct connection that C three has got to these three? Because I know I've dealt with some of these.
Yeah.
So what's the direct connection with C three?
Essentially, you mentioned President Trump, because some of those, some of the things about the trade tariffs, you know, meaning that calls are often say, well, that hurts us because companies that we have that are international companies, well, we've got several that are international companies, Japanese companies, Canadian companies, Mexican companies. The case is, every one of those we talk to, we have, they have an interest in making the most of their investments. They need the people to be trained, they need all of these dots to be connected. So we put in place, when we formed C three, to have a group that's daily looking at all of these aspects of business environment. What is it that makes us competitive? Are we promoting those things? Are we getting the word out that this is placed in welcome? It's a, it's process that's always behind the scenes, but it always happens that when companies have these things that come up as opportunities or come up as problems, then we're gonna probably be involved. Not always, there's some companies that aren't aware of, you know, what's available out there, but all of the companies that do have.
I guess what I'm asking, what can you show me that you can contact these people, C three, who are spending our money wisely? What can you show me where C three has been involved with these companies, expanded their businesses? And why should this county spend their money with C three? I guess that's what I'm trying to ask.
Well, because we're, we're a good thing going.
I mean, I can say a good thing goes, but that don't mean anything.
Spending the money, the, but the fact is, each of these companies that come up with these requests, and they'll always have requests, and it's smart for them to ask for what's the best that you can do for them. So then that question is being asked of the county and the cities of this area, what can you do for them? And so that leads to these conversations about, well, we've got these resources, others people have these, we're gonna connect, connect you with those and make sure that you're taking advantage of these things. They've created these programs for your advantage. So we get calls or emails, invite them to meetings because of our marketing, people know that we're the contact. We're the ones that do work through the issues of whatever it is that we can pull together to make this possible, we're gonna do that.
I mean, I understand that, but I was on the city council in home, and home builders come to us for tax incentives, and we wasn't in C three. I'm getting, I wanna know how you connected with them and how these other companies?
Well, I did the tax abatement forms. I did all of that, but meet up here at the coffee shop with the folks at Hamilton Homes to get the, get all the eyes dotted and the t's crossed to bring to the council. So I didn't know, I didn't come to the council meeting to present it. It's their request. It goes, when it does go to the State Department of Revenue, it's strictly between the county and, or the Department of Revenue and that company, and make sure that they're in line, you know, legally. But it was our role to say, well, you don't need just these forms, you need your E-Verify. You need to, to show that you're registered, the Secretary of State to be a new company. You need to show that you're, you know, that your time, your place in service time matches your startup date, that your investment matches what's eligible for tax abatements.
Did, my question in this kind of is, did C three go directly to Mercedes and say, we need training classes down here at Bevel? Or did Mercedes contact Bevel and do that on their own? Or did you, or did you not have a part in connecting that together? And I understand the training part, and I think what a lot of our people are looking for in the county is spinoff job out of Mercedes, where we could create some jobs around here, you know, that people can drive local and make twenty, twenty-five bucks an hour instead of driving, you know, to Toyota or to Conspel or all the way to Tuscaloosa, you know, and keeping our kids local.
Yeah, I'm with you. Spinoff jobs from those companies that are here, and yeah, that is the case, that we have over half our employees that drive outside of their home county. And that may just be next door, but it's, this case, over half our employees drive outside of their home county for work. In our case, it just comes through our business retention efforts, just investing in companies and talking to companies. There's never a week that it's not two or three contacts and working on, you know, specific things with companies that come up. Was last week, last week I was in Nashville, a consultants event, but the week prior was with Heister, a meeting with them to talk about, we've got this opportunity here, and we need to make it smooth, we need to make it so that we know that we can promise to our investors we're doing all that we can to maximize the potential of these programs for us. We know that Alabama's got good programs and good reputation with this environment, so tell us about it. People have to answer those questions, and that's why you pull together people that were there at that meeting or that you worked with them, as I did on my home Friday with a tax incentives policy person, when your big company get to hire tax incentive policy people from St. Louis to call and say, we've never done this before. We've gotta change, you know, ownership at state level. We've gotta look at our investment that we did a couple of years ago. We've got this window of property tax abatements that they overlap, because it's a new project, people we need to talk to. So that's the sort of things that we do to make sure that everything kind of happens, again, under the radar, that this commission and others that pay our, you know, for our organization maybe don't realize. But the good thing is, at the end, at the end of the day, we see success, and we celebrate that success in terms of jobs. And I didn't mention about Mercedes and Bevel. It's Bevel's role to, and they recognize in meetings that we've had with them, to contact these companies and work out the nitty-gritty of these agreements with companies so that they're making sure that they're providing the right kind of employees that they're looking for. The, in the case of Mercedes, no, they're reaching out all over the state. It's really a desperation. People talk about the success of Tuscaloosa area where success hurts. In this case, it's hurting them with their non-Mercedes employers. I was at Mercedes on the campus just a few weeks ago with a guy that lives in Fayette County. It's their, he's their aftermarket warehouse manager. But, yeah, we, we know, and people know us at Mercedes, when we are working towards automotive, you know, suppliers that we hope to have here. Mercedes is just one of eleven companies now automotive manufacturers within two hundred and fifty miles of us. So we went with Birmingham Firm to come up with a marketing campaign. We've been to Detroit just in the past few weeks, with Will Taylor, former president of Mercedes, to meet with companies and talk about this area, which we call the crossroads of the automotive south. We also worked closely with the Alabama Automotive Manufacturers Association, Ron Davis, who is the president of that organization, is on our board, lives in Fayette. So, yeah, I don't think you'd ever be afraid or wonder whether you have to place the table. We do. I was able to sit at the recent awards, membership awards ceremony for the Alabama Automotive Manufacturers Association. I sat by a guy from Polaris, the other side of New, was a guy from Mercedes, Will Taylor didn't be there. The governor was at the chair. The people from Toyota and Mazda, they all know about this area. And they know it's only a matter of time before we're really gonna hit the jackpot here because people aren't gonna be able to ignore us any longer. We're sitting in the middle of a place that's just surrounded by all of this activity, and yet we've not been considered because of the size of the area. What they don't recognize is all the people that come in, we're looking at that map at Heister just recently. They pulled people from, you know, probably seventy-five minute drive time, just into Heister, five hundred and fifty employees. You've got the same size company up at Kitchens in, which is Marion County, but the Hable side of Marion County that was incorporated. So we didn't have an ability to pull in a lot of people, but what you look at in terms of demographics is that, well, hey, these are small towns, very rural communities or counties. And so we're trying to say, look a little closer, recognize the size of the drawl of people to this area. And now that we can pull them in with an interstate, it's just hard to beat. But so much so that Greg Canfield, you know, the head of our Department of Commerce, said that we'd be the next top growth region, and we keep reminding him that he said that, that he's never ashamed or backed up from that, but he says it's gonna happen. And we see it happening already. We, as I said, have had one of the largest investments, a warehouser, you know, two hundred and fifty million a couple of years ago. you know, two hundred and fifty million a couple of years ago. They could have split that money anywhere, they're a really international company. And they see that the workforce and environment in our area is, is one of the best anywhere. And so what we do is not only let them get up to the point that they're ready to announce and comfortable that they're gonna get the promises that they were, were given. But then I spoke to the manager just a couple of weeks ago, he's feeling good and not really anything that he needed, but I wanna make sure that his needs are being met. But those are the calls, those are the, the meetings, those are the types of things that economic development organizations like ours do. And it's not anything that we put in paper, it's not anything that we can promise or ever make an announcement because it's not our announcement to make, it's something that we do for them.
David's one of the companies that wants to expand or come to a place. Who's their, I mean, where do they get their information about our county from and cities from?
Well, it could come from us.
Do you not provide this information for them?
Yeah, it could come from us, it's certainly from our website. We're fortunate to have gotten the domain name northwestalabamaedba.org and if you had a focus.
So it could come or it does come?
No, it, it could, it could come.
It could, I mean, already coming, if we paid you, that's my question. My problem is.
Well, it is coming.
My problem is, how many, how much money do y'all get from all three counties and all towns? That's the question I've been asking. Where to keep up their money, where to keep up their Adam, I state and everything we spend? We wanna know what we're getting for our money. That's, and it all boils down to money.
You should.
It all boils down to money.
You should, and our budget's just over four hundred thousand dollars. Our cities pay from five hundred to twenty-five thousand, actually only three that would be of that size. As you know, Hamilton's at twenty-five, Fayette twenty-five, and Winfield. But it is by size, so a small community don't, they only paying five hundred. Counties is thirty thousand, we've never changed our, our due structure. And so we take those and then the fact that we get some of the tax severance money by agreements with CDF and with Wega, then we're at the four hundred thousand. We have private members, we've got banks and utilities and just developers, others that are members of our organization. The largest private contributor, utility contributor is Tom Bigby Electric. Steve's here and we have a great relationship with Tom Bigby Electric in terms of what they're doing with Freedom Fiber. That's really gonna be transformative for this area when you see that we've got broadband capabilities that people wouldn't even expect, especially in rural area. But Steve and I are working on telemedicine, the advantages of that, and then also work at home jobs. And those things that would really maximize the use of this broadband that Freedom Fiber's bringing.
For, for future industries, what, what's in the pipeline that you're working on now?
Well, we write people or contact them every week. I read, picked up the Tennessean when I was in Nashville, recognized it just had a distribution center go up in East Tennessee. The, the best thing I got out of that article was that the, the head of Lowe's is from Tennessee. So there's an article about Lowe's Distributions there, and I plan to call the guy and get in touch with him. And so often we'll get to the president, we'll be able to get them on the phone, and they'll either say we've got somebody who can work on that, or thank you for calling, we'll, you know, give you notice sort of thing. Last week was Kroger, Kroger's doing about eighteen new distribution centers of different type, but they're getting quite a bit of press on that. And so they've been an easy target for us, but the fact is, companies aren't gonna let the press know what they're doing with their plans on, in turn, this is just a revamp of what Kroger has done in the past. And so, so it's just things that we pick up and learn in terms of going to these meetings. I guess last week in Nashville was with site location consultants. Most of the larger companies are gonna use site location consultants. And that's just to say that they don't have a corporate real estate department that finds new locations. Rarely are they looking for new locations. But when it happens, it's better for them to just contract out to a site location person. So we're visiting with those folks and talking about Northwest Alabama. And those people have clients, and we may not even know, it may just be a code name project, but we just wanna hear from them when they have a request for a project.
This, this Bill Zoney, I pronounced it correctly. What did y'all do to entice them to come, or are they there just because Heister was there?
Well, they're there just because Heister was there, and they could have decided, hey, we're gonna do more up in Chicago, but we've seen something we like in Sullig, and that's just the fact that that, that plant is run really efficiently and clean and safe and we're already growing. They had bought that building across the street over a year ago because we worked on grants for that roof of the building, that sort of thing. And we do work on grants with our communities, if you've ever got a need for grants, we'd be happy to help you with that. We work closely with Keith at Northwest Alabama Council of Governments. But we get the call when the plant manager, from the plant manager, to say, we've got this opportunity. Similar when I was meeting at SDR recently, they had a new plant manager. And that happens so that you have to have a re-education with plant managers. You've got a new manager here, for instance, for Siteel, one of your largest employers locally. But you get a call from the manager, hey, we've got this opportunity, we've gotta make this happen, we're gonna make it happen in a hurry, here's what we see in the issues. And so then you begin the, the meetings with paperwork, you know, leading to the call last Friday when I was driving, I talked about tax abatements. But yeah, so we're part of that process that leads to the success to get to the finish line.
Were it not for C three, who would do this?
I don't know how you could do it, certainly you can do it on your own in terms of effective, efficient use of dollars to say, here's some organization in the place to represent us and, and can wave the flag, you know, get the banner out there and make sure that we're in the fight for all of these things. We wrote letters for Toyota, Mazda, both in conversations and submitting to the consultant, to the state, to the point that they said, well, you know, we've already got our place, leave us alone. And that place was the bridesmaid's site for Volkswagen, the one that was chosen up in Huntsville. So we always wanna make sure that we've got some, somebody, somewhere in, you know, deployed by you guys that can simply can't get in the hunt. And we're gonna be on lookout for that and doing that and make sure we've got the relationships to, to be a part of this process. But this process is always gonna be kind of behind the scenes, I'm happy to come and visit with you at any time. I'll leave you my card, my cell number's there, and it says cell number preferred. And that's just the point that, you know, if the phone's not gonna ring at the office, I'm gonna be somewhere else trying to make.
So if you've got a four hundred or a thousand dollar budget a year, y'all got anything in reserve?
We do have some money in reserve, but that was for a future office. We'd love to have an office at some point, it's a little higher profile out on the interstate. But we were able to do that early, and we've not since, we're not building a bank account, trying to build a, you know.
Well, how does your account, how does it handle, who's, who's oversight?
Well, audited each year by Rick McCade. And so we, we each year have our board then giving those statements and presentation. Just very recently, he was able to do that. But we, yeah, we're, and we've got some good guys I mentioned on our board that are, are looking at that each month, or every other month, totally.
When you mentioned, well, go the cities and the counties that's paying up, is all of those cities that you've mentioned, are they still in?
No, no, Mr. Cobb, did you have the Hamiltons not in?
Well, I gave you a year to get us something out, and I said I would come back, and I bet you had to vote you back in.
Our timeframe is, is.
Didn't I not say that? I said a year, and so far, as far as I know, Hamilton has not got anything. And I got nothing to get you personal, I just wanna know where the money is going.
All right.
Well, I mean, we're all accountable for our money.
Yeah, well, and.
How many, how many cities besides Hamilton's not in? I mean, you got Fayette, you got.
I don't know, a few, we spoke, I know last week about membership. Marion County, most of the communities are in. Hamilton's, of course, we've talked to, talked to them just recently about coming back in. They tried some different avenues, didn't work, they're, they're thinking about that they need to come back and be a part of C three, to show that unity and to make sure that this area is working together.
Well, I agree, we need somebody to represent these counties, and I agree, we need somebody to represent us. But my thing is, why can't we hire an individual to represent us for Marion County? If, if we've, if, if for eight years now, we've been paying this, and we haven't seen, and you can, you can say you've talked to the people, and I'm not doubting you, you've talked to people. I'm not saying that you've not talked to people, which I've talked to people. But what I'm saying is, where's the frigga that, what are we getting for our money?
How can you get one person set up, established to, to have that type of marketing impact?
Well, I'm sort of waiting now, and what have I got now?
Well, you got plenty, I've just mentioned some things.
But I don't know, you got a four hundred thousand dollar a year budget, that's more than we got. It's a niche district coming to, to run on, and we have to show where our money goes.
The, it's all relative. When you, when you look at it, we have to compete with, it's all of the larger communities which have a much, much larger budgets, much, much larger staffs, have specialists in every part of what we do. So, you know, there's a way to spend more, there's a way to spend less, but what you're getting.
What I'm getting at is, where's the statements at, Adam's statement, where our money's going? I asked this for the city council, I asked, where is the money going? To this day, I haven't got anything. We're paying you, you should bring it to us, you shouldn't be getting that. We're paying you, we shouldn't have to chase you down and ask where these, Adam's statement tracks.
You win up here quite a bit, and so that's no problem, yeah, we'll, we'll share that. But you're gonna need some explanation of what this is in terms of other economic development organizations, or the type of money that you would put into certain aspects of economic development.
I'm not saying I don't trust you, you just don't trust anybody, especially when it comes to money. You still wanna say anything?
Yeah, and that's, that's what we have to share with you.
How many y'all have on y'all staff?
There's just two of us, yes, myself and Katie Hallman. We have a, a lower salary benefits lineup than we did three years ago. We had for just one year a VP that was to go out and visit industries. What happened, I had worked on that six to seven years to establish a relationship with industry, and so I sort of missed the fact that he was now going to see the industries. And in most cases, that can be, it's always gonna be, that source a new job. Companies that are here are gonna grow by a few jobs, once you add all that up, that's a lot. But then also, they're good leads, they're, they see things that are happening in their industry that they can give you leads for new companies to come in. And that relationship means so much when you have new companies to visit, that you can ask them, could you meet with these folks and tell them, you know, how you have a front line of good business in this area? So they are, they're just too valuable not to have a direct contact with. And of course, the person that we had, we got a better position than now lives in Birmingham.
State of the game.
Yeah. I wondered if I could tap a little bit with some of the questions. We were part of, and I'm talking about Tom Bigby Electric, along with other utilities here in the area, part of CDF, and we're also part, we're part of the West Alabama Economic Development deal. This same controversy came up with the CDF, and by the way, the commission paid a lot more money than what you're paying now. As Bob remembers, who was on the commission at that time, about double if my memory serves me right. So it's still thirty thousand, you were paying seventy thousand. The controversy came up then, well, what have you got for me lately? The idea sprung out among us utilities, working with the communities, and we spent months on this. And then we worked with Bill Axon, Judge Rogers, Judge Oswalt out of Fayette County, who came together to set up what is now, you see now as C three. The idea wa, was to significantly lower costs and still try to keep our marketing out there. One of the big problems has always been communication. Now, to be honest with you, as the commission, as David pointed out, you appoint a board member. So it really is the board member's responsibility to come to here. I know you look at David and say, but, but if you're paying, we're all paying him, and Tom Bigby's paying him as well, guess what we want him to do? Marketing. The whole issue to growth of our county and the well-being of our county is marketing. Going to these trade shows, knocking on the doors. I've been involved in economic development for thirty-five years, and let's just put it the way our Northwest Alabama is. We're not thought of very much, especially out of Montgomery.
I agree.
If we're not out there marketing and picking ourselves up out of the ditch and doing what we're supposed to be doing ourselves, nobody's gonna say us. That's what we're involved in, that's what you're doing. Now, you appoint board members. Every county appoints board members, the city appoints board members. There are all kinds of attorneys on the board, there are all kinds of accountants on the board, they oversee the money. There is a detailed budget, and if I've been involved in a lot of organizations, every penny is accounted for. Every penny is accounted for. It's properly spent, they go through proper procedures every other month, and I've served on that board for.
But how are we supposed to know that, when we got nothing in front of us to look at?
Then there is a communication issue. And, you know, obviously, everybody who serves on that board are professionals too, and they're very busy, just like y'all are very busy, he's, David's very busy. It's hard, the hardest thing, both in our organizations, in our communities, in our churches, is communication, isn't it?
I agree.
It's, it's, it's hard, because we're all doing our jobs, and then to stop and then say, okay, let's, let's educate, let's make sure the information is out there, it's hard when we're out there doing it so much. And I'm sure your staffs are that way, right? You know what's going on, but what do they know? Well, you hadn't had time to tell them, you hadn't had time to deal with this, you hadn't had time to deal with that. That, that goes on. Obviously, that can be improved, there's always, I know in my organization, I can never not stop or not improve communication. I don't, I've never seen one that can't improve of, of any type. But I promise you, C three money, you can't get a better value. Absolutely, you cannot get a better value. One last thing I want, and I'm gonna hush. Being in this thing a long time and be unsweating, that was the mistake of Hamilton, and I've never said that publicly.
Well, I suppose the same thing as I'm asking you. And I still have to receive.
But a mayor or a commission or anybody else who's elected official cannot do direct business with Montgomery. Now, is Montgomery being extremely helpful to us? Well, I don't wanna be offensive to them. Could we do more, could we get more, should we get more? Probably so. But have they, and have we seen recent signs where they're trying? I think absolutely. We went for years, years, without a single prospect being brought up from Montgomery. Number one, that's starting to break. The dam is starting to break where they're now bringing a team. That's a huge improvement than what it was ten years ago. And it takes a constant, constant deal. I've had the, it used to be called the ADO, and I knew the director extremely well, and I'm sitting in his office, and the thing that he was gripping the most is we would send mayors down there from this community, we'd send mayors down there, and he said, we're tired of dealing with mayors, cause we ain't gonna deal with politicians. We want y'all to have a professional, and everybody needs to go through a professional. That, that was the emphasis of that too. Why? Because his whole job depends on him doing what he says he's gonna do, when he says he does it, how he's it. Truth and, and all of that is fantastically important.
I'm not disputing anything you're saying or he's saying, I mean, I'm not disputing any of that. What I'm, my problem is, where's the money trail, where's the money going?
Well, there's a budget and there's an audit, and what he needs to do is get you that, so you can see both the budget and the audit. You know, very, very professional firm audits, and always has audits. Well, guess what, we're spending money too, and we wanna know every penny, and we're pretty tight, real tight. We wanna know every penny has been spent properly too. So there is an audit, there is a budget, and that's all there, and it's clear. He's gotta follow some things, you know, the whole thing's there, just need to share that with you so you can look at it. But I promise you, at the end of the day, this is the best value you can humanly expect to get. Yet you could go hire somebody, but if you wanna hire somebody with the right credentials, right, and then you gotta spend years developing relationship, it's gonna cost you some serious money, if you wanna just do it in Marion County. And the reality was, that's already been tried, and guess why everybody did? They won't try it very long because of the money it was taking.
I think you've hit on the main thing, is establishing relationships with these people. We're all new, easy to meet. We, for us to come together as a county, the three counties, we have all got to establish a right relationship and get together.
And you gotta give that time. It will happen, it will happen.
And I've, I've got a question to this, uh, is Scott a member of this committee, board member? Okay, I had an issue with that just myself over the weekend. I wanted to contact Scott, he's the county lawyer, right? Commission. I wanted to contact him and talk to him about C three. He's a board member. I think that's not, through the ethics, I don't need to do that. How can he give me advice on what the commission thinks on C three, and him being a board member and drawing a check off C three for his board membership? Who can explain that? Scott might can explain that to me. But I need to come to you and ask your, you know, I, I don't want you to tell me what to do, but I want you to tell me, just like Steve done, how it, how it would help the county as to, uh, re-sign them or redo the contract. But, if you're, if you're a board member, you're gonna tell me, yeah, you need to do it. And if you're not a board member and you're our lawyer for our commission, you may say, no, you don't need to do it. How, how am I gonna get a straight answer out of that? And how are you tied to that, that, I mean, that's my question.
Couple of things. One, we, we don't get paid unless I've not picked up a check somewhere, but as a board member, but I'm, I'm the commission's appointee. If y'all want someone else, y'all can replace me, if you feel like there's a conflict, but I...
No, I, you, you understand what I'm saying, though?
Oh, yeah, I do, yes, sir.
How would I come to you and ask you that when you're on the board? You're on both sides, you know?
Well, I represent y'all on that board, so...
Okay.
When is your contract due? When, when, when does it expire?
Our fiscal year is from October to the end of September. It's sort of like we're, you know, within Hamilton, decide we'll pay late the year or early the year. But, um, our, um, our members pay at any point in time. Some pay by the month, some pay quarterly, uh, some just pay, you know, a single check.
So, when I ask for a financial statement, I should be able to get this before I make my mind up, right?
Yeah, sure.
If everything broke down, where our money's going.
Yep.
How long do we have to, to pay up?
Anytime, yeah, no rush at all, no rush at all. Uh, I wanna talk about next week, and this may be an indicator that holidays, people get involved in other things, but we're having on Tuesday a call, conference call with a guy out of Carolinas. He's working with University of Alabama on startup companies that, uh, resources, new jobs. Those are start from scratch, those are here to expand, those that come into the area from elsewhere. Those are the ones where they have the big headlines, new companies coming in. But when you have a company that starts from scratch, a homegrown success, Tiffin's a good one as far as their start in Red Bay, but we feel like there are more people that may have an idea and with the right kinda help, can form a business. So, we're having this online meeting with this guy that's talking about a technology village concept that already University of Alabama's supporting in Coleman and Fairhope, and we're saying, you'll wind up here. Especially this has strengthened our opportunities to take advantage of starting businesses by the fact we've got Freedom Pipe in the area. On Wednesday, we'll have a guy that's an expert and attorney on opportunity zones. Opportunity zones are a new federal program that people can invest their capital gains. Uh, they can direct those toward opportunities on projects that save tax dollars. So we're having that guy that'll be meeting here to talk about the, uh, that new program. And then on Thursday, I'll have a tour with a guy that's new, that's part of Commerce, a project manager that has worked local. And I appreciate that, he worked in Opelika, I worked in Opelika for a while. But, um, this guy's coming to look around the area, get to know the product before he gets back to Montgomery to his desk. He can say, I saw something up there in Marion County that, uh, you may wanna take a look at. So, look forward to, uh, next week. Um, this week, we're, we're meeting with newly elected members. We had plans with that call to have a meeting, uh, it was probably just a couple of weeks ago, it was canceled at the Holiday Inn. But I do agree with you, Mr. Nichols, we need to get to know each other better, and we'll work toward that, and we'll get you some information like we asked for. I appreciate the opportunity to work with you and to be here. Thanks to the board members, and, uh, yeah, they're, um, we feed them lunch, but they haven't, Scott's got Mr. Check, and we appreciate Scott and Matt as your representatives.
Tony, I appreciate you coming in there. I do know, I don't know of a time that I've ever been serving on this board that you can drive down the main roads here and see signs out there. I think, you know, or, uh, I'm saying eighty percent of your jobs come from existing companies. I think we are expanding some of these and getting, uh, so... And, uh, I think we'll, we'll always have a hard time growing in this area when you have the, the I sixty-five pipeline, not for Birmingham, Monmouth, Montgomery Mobile, we can elect your governors and your top officials, so you're always, you're always gonna have to compete against those, uh, larger, uh, places to get, uh, uh, recognition over here in northwest Alabama. But I do think it's, uh, it's coming.
And speaking of the signs, that's another issue I got. On interstates or sign or billboards you got up, it's in pitiful shape.
That, um, what we're talking about is that CDF had that sign on the site there, the city's property industrial park, and it's one that, um, we were able to replace several years ago. Uh, one that we've not got any calls on, but it's, um, but we'll, we'll take care of that.
I mean, it either been took down or replaced.
Yeah.
It looks bad.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Tony, for coming. Is there any questions, any other questions, anyone, uh, who's in attendance today, have anything to say or concerning our industrial development? Appreciate the information. Uh, we have four who looked at, uh, of the financial, of yearly financial statements that we need to vote on and approve. Uh, here a motion, we approve this yearly financial statement. I make a motion and approve it.
I'll second.
I've got a motion on second, is there any other?
Is this it right here?
Yes.
I need it two more times ago.
Well, this, this...
That's last year's, I believe. That's not this coming year, that's last year.
That's when it's been approved.
Yeah, well, we, that's what, that's, that's what we've done this year.
But ain't nothing we do, but it's already, it's already been, it's been...
Let's go ahead and approach.
This is a review of last fiscal year, it's the financial statement that ended on September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. There is a state law that says that the yearly financial statement has to come from the books of your county, and it has to be published in your local newspaper before the end of the year. So, this is a yearly financial statement. It tells where we were at the end of September, and then next year, probably around June or July, the state auditors will come in and they will audit our yearly financial statement at that time.
So we've been auditing all, all of it, we'll be soon.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions, comment? I'll first say I, oh likewise. Uh, uh, we got a, a comment here, we'll just split some traffic, uh, highway and traffic, uh, funds is, is mentioned on your, on your sheet today, on your itinerary sheet today. Uh, Michelle, you have some, tell us about, uh...
Yes, sir.
Heat pumps and, uh, situation at there for?
Yes, y'all had at the last meeting, asked me to get some bids, whether to replace the heat pump. I contacted three vendors, and we received two responses, um... This is a revised quote from Davis Air, forty-six fifty point fifty-two.
Davis Air?
Uh, Davis, Davis Air, yes, sir.
What score, how much?
Four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-two cents. This bid is from Schatz Property Services. They bid forty-six hundred dollars for a train unit, one year parts and labor. And it looks like they bid a Goodman with ten years parts and labor for forty-five hundred. Those are the bids, Mr. Chairman.
Davis Air was on the train, though, wasn't it? I can stand that up last one.
It, it, it's a two and a half ton train? It is, uh, this quote is to replace a two and a half ton American Standard heat pump with a fourteenth year, two and a half ton train.
What's the shot?
What's the forty-six hundred? It's a train?
It's a train unit as well, one year parts and labor. Then as an alternate, he bid, uh, uh, a Goodman, two and a half ton for forty-five hundred with ten year parts and labor, warranty.
And the forty-six hundred train is two and a half ton too?
Yeah, they're all two and a half tons, it appears.
What about the Davis, they got a, he's, he get every...
Yeah, he, he's doing it for two and a half ton.
Two and a half ton. What about the warranty on it?
Uh, it, uh, it doesn't specify.
The company, the company that builds, they get our condensers warranty on them.
Yeah, and, and I'm gonna say that it's the same as the, the train on the other one, with the parts and labor.
They all have the same warranty.
Yeah, now, um, the Goodman, of course, he, he's got a ten year on it.
What would you do, let the engineers on, to look over the bids and to recommend, which is, uh, the better of the two bids, or any of, whatever the bids are?
I'd like to review the bids and make a recommendation. How do y'all...
Are you, at this time of your life, or...
This is first I've looked at them, and you certainly want to look at them, make sure we're prepared apples and apples.
So, the unit that's out there now, is it just not working at all?
It's, it's young, it's, it's gotta do its part. Well, I think, actually, there's three units that operate that building, it's kinda crazy, you know, but there's three separate units that operate that, that airport FBO building, so...
Oh, without heat?
Yeah, well, for that, for that section of building, yeah, I think we probably need to...
I mean, look...
Within the week, I can, I can get back with the chairman, or any y'all that would want to look at this and, and help look at it, I certainly don't have a problem. But, yeah, we probably wanna do something, we're having some cold weather, and, and we don't want pipes to freeze and things like that. You know, you can get into some other issues.
And I, I think, my understanding is, you, it's out, it's one that takes care of the restrooms and all too, doesn't it?
Yes, yes, that's right, that's correct.
We all, like, so, recommendations next Monday?
Yeah.
Up to you with me, but...
Yeah, then you can call and ask them about the warranty.
Yeah, yeah, it's ten year, one year, it's a pretty big difference, so, you know, that's, I don't know, we need to investigate, and that, make sure we understand what, what they're offering.
Okay, you'll write us a recommendation next Monday, uh, which...
We'll do, I got a couple other items.
Well, I think, say, the, our core lease one.
Yeah, we, we got a, we got a current lease, and actually, the way the lease reads, it's, it's a two, one year lease, and it automatically, it automatically renews each month. And, and it's with flick, mixed flying service, and they pay us eighty-five hundred dollars per year to use that, that hangar, or a portion of that hangar. They also, we agreed to sell them our fuel at ten cents per gallon over our cost, so that's incentive for them. It's worked very well, I'd recommend that we continue to, continue to lease it month by month. Either party can terminate the lease with thirty days' written notice, so, um...
Is this the hangar that is gonna be tore down?
No, 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 this, this is a large hangar, it's got three, three nice jets in it. I mean, these are, these are like really nice jets, jet aircraft. You know, it's, it's been a great benefit for our airport, you know, we, we actually had an operating profit last year as a result of this, and, um, you know, we, it's, it's, it's been a good, a good thing for us.
He buys more fuel than everybody puts together.
He does, he buys a lot of fuel, and, um, it's Mr. Tommy Dixon, you know, it, it's just really been good for our airport. It helps us justify a lot of our grant monies that we get, and, you know, he flies in and out a good bit. I think his son flies some, and we still have a lot of fuel, and, um...
But I am right about that, wanna be discussed being tore down.
Yeah, that, that will be tore down, um...
Yeah, what are you gonna do with the material?
Uh, we'll, normally, we put that in the bid package.
Well, what I'm getting at is, if everybody's still giving everybody else, I'd like to have that for District Two shop, if I can get the material.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, you could do that, if we get, when we get to that point, and, um, it's not really used that much now, but, yeah, I mean...
I mean, I could use the material to, to put it back together.
That's right, the commission can do whatever you want to. You can keep it, you can put it in the bid, you can sell it, I mean, it's, it's...
I need one, so, I mean, it'd be great.
You know, we'll look and see, I know there's some small aircraft in it right now, I just don't, it's, it's pretty nasty over there, but, um, we'll, we'll certainly consider that option when we get to that point, or do, do that when we get to that point. But I'd recommend that we continue month to month, e- everything's good, um, you know, we don't have any issues, and, and I'd just continue going with it.
Okay, the air motion, we accept, uh, his recommendation, and we do the same until the point in time he brings us a different, uh, direction, so to go a different direction of these, so the air motion, we continue with, uh, next.
I make a motion.
I think, I can, oh, likewise.
Okay, got another lease issue.
Yes.
Also, something else that we do, of course, mowing the airport is, is a major undertaking, so, undertaking, so what we've done, we've actually leased parcels of land to the farmers, and it keeps, it keeps the, the, the foliage down, we don't have to bush hog it, and we actually have four, three leases. One of them's due in January, the other one's actually due now. Mr. Kenneth Moore, he leases twelve acres, we charge him two, he gets two hundred dollars. And he keeps it cut and keeps it farmed, and, and that's good. And Mr. Wade Rollins, he, he gets about twenty acres, and he pays us five hundred dollars. And y'all gotta understand, we're not having to cut grass, you know, and they're keeping, you know, there's, there's rules and regulations in the bid, in, in the lease, they can't grow really high crop or things, trees, where, 'cause that would be a obstruction to the aircraft, so... And then Mr. Carl Lucas has got eleven acres, and he pays us two hundred dollars. So I would recommend that we authorize the chairman to enter any, any lease agreements, uh, based on the terms that we've mentioned, for the county.
I make a motion. I'll second.
Oh, thank you, Scott. Oh likewise.
One other item, Mr. Chairman, I'll be out of your way. Uh, currently, the way we do things as far as hiring employees, we have a probationary period for all of our employees. We have a six-month probationary period, and after that six months, as soon as they've met the requirements, I recommend that they be put as full-time classified employees. And Mr. Tanner Chandler, actually, it becomes effective January the seventh, when he gets his six months in, but being holidays and everything, I'd like to go ahead and recommend, effective that date, that he be transferred to full-time classified employee, and that way he would be afforded the benefits of full-time employees, you know, and so, you know, I'd recommend, and he, he was hired as a probationary. I couldn't tell you what vacancy it was at the time, right now, I didn't, didn't think to get that, but, but it was, it, it came from the vacancy. It's somebody that's been in the system, that we hired, interviewed, and, and worked out his probationary period. Recommend y'all...
How do you, like, hanging up from that, how do you, like, the hiring part? Say, if someone says this guy here, he's in one or five, or lives in two or three, and, and one of these people quit, did they, they, they can't be replaced by the same, if he come out of that same district?
We, well, here's what we, there's two different things. We, we would normally do an interdepartmental trend, I mean, transfer, or, or interdepartmental promotion, where we could actually offer the job to our in-house employees first, before we go to the outside. We typically do that anyways, if that...
Yeah, I'm right on that.
We would advertise it as an inter, interdepartmental promotion, and then, then the people within the county could apply for it. And then we would interview those, and we'd make that same recommendation to the county commission. Now, if we go to the outside, we post it on the bulletin board in, in the places that we normally place things, and we'll, I don't know, I'm not sure we put it in the paper every time, we, we might, we might not, yeah, we advertise it. But we try to give everybody an equal opportunity to have that job, so, but if it is interdepartmental, you can, you can do that.
You're involved in that.
Okay.
Tanner, Tanner's with the garbage box too.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Oh, likewise.
That's all, Mr. Chairman, that's all our questions.
I believe that's all on our agenda for today, uh, air motion, uh, the, the jury.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Oh, likewise. Opposed likewise.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.